Record on my side too here. Okay, so. Everything's recording now, and it'll be available on my YouTube. So it says on the bottom, it says recording, dot, dot, dot YouTube. So you can take a look there to find the recording after and the PDF for the file for the what we have written here. And yeah, so as usual, I have notes for this course. They're available on my website, which is. W W W dot two tour dot C A slash notes. Make that way bigger. Where's the where's the button to make it bigger? So my notes are available there for this course. They're complete. They have everything from for this course. My professor was a little bit different. We didn't do exactly the same stuff, but we do have a obviously a lot of overlap. We did no proofs, basically. We had no proofs. When I took it, so that is a major difference, but the second half of the course is not super proof heavy. So our second, like last third of the course is not super proof heavy. But yeah, okay, so that's that. Now I have, this is what I have. I mean, I have the, I have the twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen final. I have the twenty fourteen final. And I have a couple of assignments that you guys sent. I got one email. Someone requested some questions, so we can do a couple from there. And yeah, but let's hear, I guess, let's hear it from. The chat as well, like what, what do you want me to focus on? Like I, I know, I think the professor already did this final. I know you have solutions for both, but I think the professor already just like did this in the lecture, maybe. I might be wrong about that. I don't know. This one, maybe he didn't. And then these are just like assignment questions. So like what you want me to focus on? He did. Okay. So yeah, out of these, so out of these ones. Which one do you want me to focus on? Well, I can make a poll. Is there a poll? Can I, if it's only if it's a few buttons away, let's see. Probably is a few buttons away. But. I don't see the button to do it. So no poll. Uh, yeah. And assignment twelve, yeah. Makes sense to do the file that he did not cover. I agree with that. So someone requested some questions from assignment twelve. So let's start with, let's start with that. And then we can go on to the twenty fourteen. Um, so it was question three and question four. Question three and question four from assignment twelve. So let's start with that. Um, they're, they're good questions. I like them, so. Uh, we can try that and then from there we'll move on again, like I said, to the twenty fourteen. Okay, so. Um, this is from assignment twelve. Assignment twelve. It says, oh, we're talking about relations here, basically. So we have some sort of relation. Um, and uh. So H is this relation or this function that maps from. R cross R to R cross R, right? This is like the X Y plane. To the X Y plane. So it's some kind of two D to two D transformation or a function that we have. That maps like this. And the way it works is that X replaces replaced with X plus one and Y is replaced with two minus Y. So I just basic example, H of zero, one. Is zero plus one, one, uh, two minus one. So it's one, one. So the point zero one maps to one, one. So it's a function maps from one set to another. Okay, so. We want to determine if it's one to one and if it's on two. So I think I, I, you know, it's good to just describe quickly what is one to one and on two, right? So a function. Uh, can be described as one to one. The, the, I'll show the formal definition after, but um, basically like. If so, one to one is basically like invertible. So that means that if you have some sort of function, you're mapping from your domain. To your code domain. Right? And that's what a function is, right? Mapping from domain to code domain. So in this case, this is our domain and this is our code domain. And so, for example, it takes the point like zero, one, like we just saw up there and it maps it to the point one, one. And that's what our function's doing. I guess our function's H instead of it, our function. Um, and basically we just have to make sure it's one to one, which means that. Uh, a single element of the domain maps to a single unique element of the code domain and they are. There's no overlap. So basically I'm saying like, there can't be another point like five, two or something like that, that also maps to one, one. Basically, yeah, but that's, that's it. And, and I think a nice way to think about that is it has to be invertible. That's, that's, so that's the requirement. You can't, like, if this is true, like this is not true, by the way, like five, two does not have to one, one, but I'm saying hypothetically, if it did. This would not be invertible, because if you tried to invert, like, you know, you have this element of the code domain, you're trying to go back to the domain here. Um, you don't know if it's this one or this one. So it's not invertible. It is not one to one. Okay, but I don't, I don't know, like, I'm not making any claims for H yet. I'm just saying what, what it means to be one to one. So, so for example, five, two does not map to one, one. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that maps to one, one. So, so the way we do this is we basically test for invertibility. That's how you check for one to one, one to ones. As you test for invertibility. For invertibility. Lot of I's and invertibility. And so the way you do this is you say, okay, let's just take an arbitrary element of the code domain. Let's call it A B. Right? Let's call it A B. And I want to figure out what is the corresponding X Y that maps to that A B. Right? What's the X Y? That maps that A B and it should be some sort of function of A B. So if I can do that, if I can make like a formula, a for like, like an algorithm for myself that turns uh, this output into this input. Then it is invertible. Um, and it, and so it is one to one. So that's what we're gonna do. We're basically gonna test for invertibility. So if I'm saying that X Y maps to this, that would mean that A equals X plus one. Um, and Y equals two minus Y. Uh, B equals two minus Y, right? Because that's, that's the formula here, right? That X turns into this, so that would be our A and that would be our B. And basically I want to try to undo this to get some kind of formula here like this. Um, and so I am able to do that because I can say A minus one equals X and I can say, move that over. Y equals two minus B. And so what that means is now for any given. Um, A B value. So let's, let's say, for example, I, I have the point two, five. In my code domain, in my output, I want to figure out which point mapped to it from the domain. Invert, I'm basically inverting it. Uh, I can just plug that into here, right? I can just plug, this is two and this is. Uh, five for the example. Let me just be clear, like this is the, this is the example. Let me undo that. This is the example that I'm just doing here. This is the point two, five. Example, sample. And so, yeah, basically, uh, uh, this, this does that. This, uh. This proves it. Is there anything else in the solution here? I'm just making sure, see if there's anything else in the, what they say in the solution. Is anything else today? Yeah. So yeah, they have a couple more words in there. They have a couple more words there. So I'll add the, I'll add the extra words, but. Basically, yeah. Basically that. So, uh, or did I? Well, I guess I was, I guess I was also half describing for on two. So this is also for on two. Cause if I choose that. X Y equals A B. Yeah. Okay. So I was also kind of describing at the same time how to do it for on two. Um, they're very similar kind of ideas here. So I guess for on two, this is more of the description like this. So let me go through what the solution is for one to one as well. And then there's, there's a, there's, this will be a little bit better for on two, but they're very similar kind of ideas. So the solution for one to one, um, let's, let's look at the formal definition. Go to my notes here. Look at the formal definition. So here's from my, my notes, uh, graphs, the relations and functions. And then we have, um, our functions, I guess I gotta go to functions. The one to one is this whole thing. So a function. Is one to one if this guy, this is probably the best way to do it, or you can, I mean, you can go like this too, right? Is the only way that's possible is if the, the, um, like. The only way that the two, the function maps to, um, the same thing is if the input is the same. Right? So the only way that F of A equals F of B is if A equals. Right? That, that's the only way that happens, which is what I was describing here with this diagram. So we're gonna use kind of this as our definition to show that, uh. It is one to one. If it's any questions, feel free to stop me or type a message in the chat. Um, so. Uh, yeah, let's, let's, let's just do it. So, uh, we need to show that this is true, basically. And so we do that by saying, okay, well, assume that H of X one, Y one is equal to H, H of X two, Y two. Uh, we need to show that this implies that X one equals, uh, X two and Y one equals Y two. Right? That the, the points are the same, basically, that the two points are right. So the way we'll do that, um, is we'll. Uh, we'll just look at this. So what is this? What does this tell us? This tells us here that, uh. Uh, that by definition of the function itself, X one plus one. And so X one plus one. Two minus Y one. Equals, um, and then here we have X two plus one. Two minus Y two. They must be equal. So we're saying, you know, assuming this, show that it gets this. So we're gonna, we have to use that assumption. And so now we're here. And if these points are same, their components must be the same and in the same order. That's the definition of an ordered pair. So this. Must be true. And additionally, this must be true. And then, sorry, this is equal. And just basic algebra at this point, these, these are the same. So we've proven, oh, sorry, this goes away. So we've proven that X one equals X two and Y one equals Y two. So that's it. That's probably the more, that's like, yeah, that's more of a way to do it. I guess this works more for on two, but yeah. So for one to one, you need to show what I was showing in this diagram here, which is that. If they map to the same value, if you have two different inputs, well, yeah, if you have two, if you have two different inputs into the function. And they map to the same value. Um, those two inputs must have actually been the same thing. And so that's what we, that's what we show here, right? Is that, uh, if I have two different inputs, X one, Y one, X two, Y two. And they map to the same value. That's what H of it is, right? Then it must really be that they are the same value. And that, I mean, that doesn't always happen. That only happens for on two functions. And so this is kind of the thing here. We've proven, we've proven the statement. Or for one to one. So that's for one to one. And now for on two. Basically, we need to ma, we need to show that, uh. Everything in the code domain gets mapped on to. That's kind of how I think about it, right? So for example, like the function, the function Y equals X squared is not on to. Just as an example here, to give you an idea of what on to means, right? Y equals X squared is a function which maps from R to R. I should do this kind of R, R to R, right? Because it maps for, you put in a number and you get out a number. Um, the, that's the code domain. Right? That's the code domain. And if it was on to, that would mean that every single real number. Um, in this code domain, which is every single real number, gets mapped on to by the function. That's why it's called on to. But that's not true. Uh, this function only maps on to the positive real numbers and zero. So it's not on. Whereas if you had a function that was like, uh, Y equals X. This is on to. Or whatever, I can three X, just, does that, does that be X? This is on to, because every Y value gets mapped on to. Right? Um. For the entire output space. So the output space is the code domain, which is in this case, R. It's the same, the same. Um, R to R for this function down here too. And all of the code domain gets mapped on to, whereas here, not all of it does. This whole section doesn't get mapped on. But this is not on to, whereas this is on to. And so very similar to one to one, we just need to show that. If I take any arbitrary point in the code domain, the output, that I can invert it back to the. That I can invert it back to whatever was the input. Like this. Uh, and, and that, that has to work if, for regardless of what output I choose. Um, so that's kind of more, I'll, I'll rewrite this. It's, I mean, it's the same, it's the same idea as before, but I'll just, I'll just rewrite it. But I'll just explain it over again. So. For our particular function. Which we know is H of X Y. Equals X plus one. Two minus Y. We know that, uh, it's outputting into R squared, right? This is, uh, this is R squared to R squared. Right? That's the, or whatever, R cross R to R cross R, which is the same thing as R squared to R squared. So the output is gonna be something in the form A B. And we just want to see if we can invert that. If we can always invert that. Because if it, so if it's on to, then we can always invert that. If it's not on to. For example, here, we can't always invert it. For example, if I try, you know, uh, negative two here, like a Y value of negative two, I can't invert that. Right? Because there is no input value that gets me that out. So that's why this is not on to. But if I did the same thing for any Y value here, I could invert it. So that's basically what we do. So we choose A, like we, yeah, we've taken any arbitrary A, B. Um, and we know that's gonna be equal to the output, which is X plus one. Two minus Y. Um, and then, make sure I'm saying the right thing, yeah. And so we know that A must be in the form X plus one. And B must be in the form two minus Y. And you can see like the entire rearrangement happens right here. As long as you can rearrange these equations for their individual, you know, parameters. So here would be X is A minus one. And here would be Y is, uh, two minus B. We have successfully inverted it and so we can, uh, it is on to, basically. And so we just want to verify that if I do this, if I plug, right, if I take H of. A minus one. Two minus B. Then I better get A B out of this, right? I better get A B, because that's the whole point. These are, what I'm saying is that these are, this is the selection for, for X and Y. That will get me A and B. And, and of course I will get that, right? Because this is A minus one plus one. And this is two minus B, or it's, sorry, it's two minus Y. So it's two minus two minus B. Which is A, two minus two is zero, minus, minus B is B, so A B. The answer is yes, on to. And. Yes, one to. This is kind of the on to, this is part B, this is. On two second. I did a little explanation first before I did that. So. Unless there's any questions, I'll keep going, but hopefully that made sense. Right? We have our. Check for one to oneness. We have our check for on to-ness. Oh, I got a message in the chat. Recording will be available as soon as it's done. I'll, I'll post it. I don't know, I might, it might take, I guess it might take an hour or two for to upload. Sometimes it takes a while, but. But, uh, that's, YouTube can do it. I will upload it right after we're done. Okay, so that's that question. That's this question three from assignment twelve. Person also requested question four, so we'll just do question four and then we'll move on to the twenty fourteen. Um. So hopefully that makes sense. Any questions? Let me know. Otherwise I'll keep going. Um. The question four. It says. If. F is a real valued function, right? So real, real value just means that it goes from R to R. It's a function from R to R. It takes in a real number, outputs a real number. So, and G is also a real valued function, then is the sum, oh, that's right, and they're both on to, they're both on to. Um, or is the sum on to? So. When you're answering a question like this, you want to just kind of like try things out, right? So like, just like test it out a little bit. It's probably the best way to do it. So like, I'll just say test one. Um, if I choose an on to function. So let's say I'm choosing X squared and I choose another on to function, see. Minus, minus X. I don't know, just choosing different on to functions, right? These are both, oh, sorry, that's not, that is not on to. Oh, I guess I can't choose that. Uh, three X and minus X. Let's do a different on to function. Three X cubed. Let's do X cubed. So X cubed is an on to function, uh, beca, and just the way I know that is just imagine the graph of it. Right? Every Y value of the whole Y axis gets mapped on to, right? There is, you can invert. You can invert all of it. Um, so, so yeah, so that's, that's the idea here for. For that. And then this, oh, same, same thing here, right? Every Y value gets mapped on to for both. Yeah, someone asked something about the first question? Yeah. Do you wanna, wanna? Like, do you want to see something or just? Ask a question? The last part? Here's the last. Okay, sounds good. So, um, uh. Uh, we want to justify our answer here for this. I'm just gonna do a test just to see what happens, right? So if we add these together, this is X cubed minus X, this is still. An on to function, right? Because it's, it's a cubic, right? It's a cubic. I mean, it's gonna be kind of vaguely different than this, but a cubic is always on to. Yeah, so basically on to is saying the code domain is one to one with the domain. That makes sense to me. Yeah. Yeah. Basically, basically, the, the, the idea, like, if it's, if it's on to. This implies that the rain, the, yeah, the code domain. Equals the range. That's, that's what it, that's what it means to be on to, is that your code domain is the range or the range is the code, whatever. These are the same sets. Um, as in the, the, the range is the actual values that the function maps on to. For X squared, it's the like positive Y values. Um, the code domain is just the type of output. Real numbers, the set of real numbers here, right? So if those are the same, then. So I guess it's more of an equivalence between code domain and range. Okay, so we did our first test here, two on to functions and the result was on to. Great, interesting. That, that's fine. But obviously, obviously test it out more, right? So, um. Do at least another one. So think of ways that you could get functions that are not on to. What are not on to functions? Well, you could get X squared. Um, but I couldn't add, I couldn't like add X squared with something else. Uh, to see if that's on to, because X squared is already itself not on to. I could try, I have to somehow combine on to functions to get a function that's not on to. So like, there's no way I can combine again, like. X, uh, X and X cubed or something like that, X and X cubed. Uh, well, I did up there to get an X squared. There's not, using just addition, we're just adding the functions together, right? Um, so I need to somehow take two on to functions and get a, get a non-on to function. What are other non-on to functions? Well, constant functions are not on to, right? So I'm getting some message in the chat. These are two people's message. Me, both correct things to do. So constant functions are not on to. Um, because if you think of a constant function, right? The output, like, let's say this is, this is a constant, uh, this is a constant, like, whatever, five here. Um, the output, the code domain is all real numbers and the actual range is just five, so they are not equal. So that means it's not on to. So constant functions are not on to. Um, even simpler, like just Y equals zero is not an on to function. So if there's some way that I can combine functions, on to functions to get zero. Um, then that would show that, that this is not always true. And that is of course possible if I choose, uh, the first function F of X to be, um, X. And the other function G of X to be negative X. These are both on to, but when I add them. Right? Which is, which is what F plus G is of X. Um, this is zero. X plus negative X is zero. That is not on to. Yeah, it certainly would work with X and, uh, well, not X and X plus one, but X, so, so it's, yeah, so. Uh, someone gave me a question. I'll, I'll respond to that one second. So just wanted, I want to show here, right, that that is not on to. Not on to. These are both on to. And so since we've found an example, we found a counter example, so this is not always true. But yeah, for sure. You could always, you could do lots of other examples here. So this is just like one example. Or, dot, dot, dot. You could also do, someone suggested in the chat here, we do X and X plus one. Almost would work, but if you add these together, you're gonna get two X plus one, which is on to. But if you did negative X here, if you did X and negative X plus one. Then yeah, these would cancel, right? And then you just get constant one and that's also not on to. You could also do that totally. G of X. But the point is that you have to get a constant function, so please have to. Go on to. I'll just say, or you could also do this. You can also. Okay, so that's it for that question. I'll move on to the twenty fourteen final, but if anybody has questions, feel free to stop me. You can of course also unmute if you'd like to. Find that final. Okay, so. I don't know, what do you guys want to see? I mean, how, I, I think probably somewhere that's good for us to do is to start. With, uh, with question six, because it's a relation, like, we haven't really talked about it yet. Like, we, yeah, we haven't really talked about them. Pass the diagrams, so, um. And maximal and minimal elements and total orders and stuff like this. So I, I think we should do this. And then maybe even question seven. I think you guys didn't do any graph theory stuff, right? Is that correct? You didn't do any graph theory stuff? Or did you do some graph theory stuff? Like, did you do the first graph theory, first theorem, like? Edges and graph theory was skipped, okay. But I think, uh, yeah, let's start, let's start. So, so I won't do that part of the test. Um, so this is the winter or whatever, the twenty fourteen final. So I think we're gonna start with question six, question seven, and then from there we'll move on to, uh, doing earlier questions or whatever people want to see. Um, okay, so let R be the divides relation on the following set. So we have this set like this and we're doing the divides relation. Right? So, um, uh, you know, X, R, Y implies X divides Y. Right? Like, that's the definition of it. Like, this is the, this is the, uh, definition of what we're saying R is, the relation R. So the devise relation on, only on this set, and we want to make what's called the Hassad diagram. So the Hassad diagram is only. Um, uh, is a diagram we make for a special, specific kind of relation called a partial order. Partial order. Partial orders have to be, have whatever these, these qualities. But we're saying here that it is already a partial order. And I, I'll explain maybe in question seven, how to, how to verify that. We could, we could do that, actually. Yeah, we could verify that it's a partial order. But anyways. Um. Let's say it is a partial order, which it is. Uh, we make a Hassad diagram. So partial orders have a bunch of things, a bunch of properties to them. The, the really important one is, uh, transitivity, right? So it's, it's transitive, so, um. The device relation is transit. And, um, uh, we also have, uh, what's the other important one? This. I, I don't, I just want to, I don't just want to list them. I, I, I just, I want to just remind myself what the. Important one is. Um. A reflexive, antisymmetric and transitive and reflexive, yeah. We'll just check reflexive. Okay. Um. So reflects, it has to be reflexive. So, uh. The Hassad diagram. Let's check here. Basically, if it's transitive, reflexive, and it's another thing called antisymmetric, which we will check after. It's kind of like you're putting things in order. That's the idea, is that it's actually kind of a way that we already think about ordering elements, that some of them are bigger than others. Like they're further up the transitive line, kind of. Um, and so because of this already kind of. Um, and so because of this already kind of like, it has this kind of quality of an order, we call them partial orders, and so the hazard diagram is a way to, to show them. So basically, like, let's just think of all the, I mean, you, you, it's kind of just possibly just brute force these kinds of things. So, um, like, let's just start with, uh, one divides two. Right? That's true. One divides two. Um, and one divides three, and one divides six, and one divides uh, four, whatever, skipping some, but anyways, it divides everything. One divides everything. Everything. Okay. Um, but that's not necessarily true for, for two, right? So two divides six, two divides twelve, two divides eight, two divides four. And of course, uh, two divides two, I should mention that, and one divides one. I mean, that, that's, that's the reflexivity, so it's definitely reflexive, right? Um, so I'm just kind of going through it like this. So you wanna think of it like, uh, because of transitivity, if one divides two and two divides four, then one also divides four. This fact is already given to us by the fact that we have these two relationships. So, um, it's kind of like, all we need to know is these two things, because we already know it's transitive, right? So we know one divides four. So the hazard diagram starts with the, uh, the kind of like, most basic element of the set. You kind of draw that on the bottom. And we kind of just draw these arrows up. It's a graph, so we draw, we draw arrows, uh, but the, we draw edges. And, uh, based on what it divides. So here, you know, one divides two, let's just, I'll just list everything. So one divides one, but we don't, we don't draw self edges on to, on, uh, passive diagrams. So one divides two, one divides three, one divides four, one divides five, one divides six, one divides seven. I, I, I'm gonna change this after. This isn't the final answer. Nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Um, oh, no, sorry, there's not a, one, two, three, four, no five, no seven. Okay, I missed a couple, sorry. There's no five in there. There's no seven. There's no nine, there's no ten, there's no eleven. Okay, that's a little easier to draw. Six, eight, twelve, okay. But we're missing out on some things here, because there, there, again, we don't need to know that one divides everything. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit, we get more information if we just show, you know, one divides two, and then separately, two divides four, to represent this one divides four. Um, so two divides four, which means I can put a four basically here. And the fact that this chain kind of goes up like that implies the transitivity. This is a hazard diagram. So since you know it's a hazard diagram, this, this transitivity is implied. We don't have to actually just draw an edge from, like this. We, it's implied just by the fact that it's connected. And four divides eight as well, right? So that goes like that. And two divides eight, but we don't have to draw that line. It's implied by the connection. Right? Redivide six, so I can put that there, and redivides, uh, and six divides twelve. You see how, like, I start with having one divides everything, and then I kind of just see how I can break that up into more statements, but it, it gets a little bit of, of a cleaner picture. And also, it kind of tells us more about the relationship between all the numbers. But that should be the answer. I'm gonna check that, just make, make sure. Um, is this the, no, that's not the question. Where's the question? Uh, I lost the solution. There's. Let's see what the hazard diagram, diagram is that they true? Is you, oh, yeah, there's more, there's more edges. I forgot, there's more edges, yes. So, I mean, you just kind of wanna see other things here, right? So two divide six is, of course, true. And I don't have to have an edge from two divides twelve, because again, it's implied, it's implied by the connection. Um, and, but four also divides twelve. And that's the, that's the hazard. I just forgot to put those. But that's the hazard diagram. I kind of did all this, but you don't have to do all this. I was just trying to show you, like, we have a bunch of these facts that we know that are within the set, and we, we know all these division facts, or divides facts. And we can organize them into a picture like this, which is a lot easier to understand. And so you start with kind of that most basic element, and you see, like, we know it divides everything. And then from there, you start kind of just moving things around. And so the, the biggest idea with the hazard diagram is that you, you don't draw the transitive edges. I'm just gonna find my notes on them. Make sure I'm saying the right thing. Yeah. So all directed edges point up. Loops are omitted, so we don't, you know, one does divide one, but we don't say that. Uh, directed edges due to transitivity are, are omitted, so we don't draw an edge like that. And we don't actually, we don't actually draw the arrowhead on it. You didn't do graph theory, I know, so you don't, don't know this stuff. But I guess in 428, you do, you do do 428, and there's graphs there, so. Okay, so that's it. That's the hazard diagram for this stuff. I got some message. From two to six, yeah, uh, people already, yeah, I fixed it. From two to six, twelve to four, and twelve and four inch, yeah. Already fixed. Um, so, yeah, that's the hazard diagram. We'll move on. Let's see what's next. The next thing is answering something about this partial order. So it says, when answering the next four part, write none if no elements have the required property, blah, blah, blah. So basically, we just wanna see if we have maximal elements, minimal elements, greatest, a, a greatest element, or a least element. So basically, the definition here is like, uh, a maximal element is like the ones at the top, right? You kind of think of these as like levels, right? So it's like locally, it's kind of like a local max, right? It's like, but locally, it's, uh, it's basically, it's the highest on the graph. And everything else that's at the same level as it, it's not comparable to. Right? It's not comparable to. So we say that these two things are comparable if there's an edge between them. Right? There's an edge between them. So it's, this is technically not the highest. They're both this kind of like three levels deep, um, but they, uh, they do, uh, are, they're both locally the highest, and they're not comparable to each other. So that's the idea, is that they're not comparable to each other, but they're both same kind of height. So there's two maximal elements. There's eight and twelve. Right? Minimal elements are, you know, kind of the lowest, right? And anything else that's as low, uh, it's not comparable to. Well, that's true here, uh, for one. Now, greatest element is an element that's at the top, it's comparable to everything, and it is bigger than everything. So that's the greatest element. So that would be, well, that, like, if, if we had, like, um, whatever, what would be a commonwealth, twenty-four? If we had twenty-four up here, that would be our greatest element, right? Because twelve divides twenty-four and eight divides twenty-four. And that would be our greatest element here. Uh, but we don't have twenty-four. But if we did, that would be our greatest element, because it is comparable to everything. Comparable just means there's like an edge connected to it. So twenty-four is comparable to two. Because twenty-four is bigger than two in this kind of like hierarchy. We're making a hierarchy with the hazard diagram. All right, a, a, a partial order has like a natural kind of idea of order here. So twenty-four is kind of like further along in the order, whereas one and two and three are earlier in the order. We don't have twenty-four, so we, we don't have an element that's comparable to everything and is greater than everything. So there just is no greatest element. There is no greatest element. Again, we have no element that is comparable to everything and greater than everything. So that's that. And then for the least element, we're looking for an element that is comparable to everything and smaller than everything. That we have, that is one. Right? One is comparable to everything and also less than everything. And so we have what if we had thirty-six on the top? Um, wouldn't quite work, cause that doesn't connect like that. Yeah, so, so, yeah, if we have thirty-six on the top, yeah, so you, and you're saying on purpose, because this would be connected here. So that still wouldn't be a, a greatest element, because it is not comparable. Or is there something else going on? No, that, yeah, it's not comparable to everything. So, um, it's, uh, it's not comparable to eight. So it's a maximal element, but it's not comparable to eight. Um, so it is not the greatest element. Yeah, what do I mean by comparable? I, I basically just mean like, um, it's like further up the chain, is what I'm saying. So, like, yeah, I mean, it's on the same chain as, um, yeah, it's on the same chain as, actually, that, that's probably is a good way to say it. So things that are further up the chain are greater. Uh, and they are comparable if they're along the same chain. Thirty-six would be the, would be maximal in this case. That's correct. Thirty-six would be maximal. Um, but it would not be the greatest element. Okay, so that's that. One more part of this question. I think it would probably be worth it for us to do. Uh, is R a topes? Is R a total order? So is R a total order relation? Explain why it is a total order relation, or give a counter example. So basically, a total order is one where, uh, everything's comparable to each other. I'm just gonna make sure that that's correct. I think that's, I think that's correct. Uh, if every pair of elements, if every pair of elements are comparable, then the partial order is called a total order. Um, so yeah, so, like, we just have to make sure every pair is comparable. So twelve and six, they're comparable. They're along the same chain, right? Um, eight, two and, uh, three and one are comparable, but like, two and three are not comparable. Right? Two and three are not comparable here. Four and six are not comparable. Eight and twelve are not comparable. So because of these guys, not comparable, not comparable, not comparable. Not, not, not comparable. Therefore, not a total order. Cause they're not along the same chain. The point of a total order is that we can definitively say, for all the elements of the set, that something is bigger than another thing. But two and three are at the same level. One's not bigger than the other. Bigger is kind of like moving up the chain here like this. The one's not bigger than the other, so it's not a total order, it's a partial order. So yeah. That's that. That is everything. That's, that's, uh, that's that question. So there's no questions. I'll just keep going, but feel free to stop me at any point. Uh, let's try question seven. So, oops, wrong one note. Uh, what am I looking for? This, yeah. Let's try, uh, these questions here. I'm doing the 2014 one now. So this is, we're gonna be checking if a relation is, uh, reflexive and other things. I forget the other things, because I don't have the question up right now, but we're gonna check all these things to see if it's, uh, if it is these things. So these are properties of relations, and we check them based off of a, just a, a definition. So we're gonna, so our, our relation in this case is defined on R. And we wanna just see if, uh, X mi- uh, X minus y, so like, X, R, Y um, implies, I guess it's a bi conditional, like that. X minus y is an element of Q. So the, the difference of these two numbers is rational. If that's true, then we say that they are related. So is it reflexive? What that means is that for, you know, for any A, which is an element of R, right, which is our, which is our, uh, relation on R. So a relation on R is like basically the, both, both X and Y are elements of R. Right? Both X and Y are elements of. Um, so we just take any A in R, and we just have to ask, is is A R A? That's what reflexive means. If, if, if this is true, if this is true, for any A, that's a real number, is A R A? A related to A? Um, if that's true, then it is reflexive. So A R A is only true if A minus A is an element of the rational numbers. Well, A minus A is zero. And, and zero is an element of the rational numbers, so it is reflexive. That's all, though. Not that much to say about that. I'm gonna put the chat up there. Be better. Hopefully that made sense. That's our, uh, that's our check for reflexivity. And then we're gonna now check for symmetry. So a symmetric relation is, uh, that if, if we have it that X are Y, if that's true, this implies that Y are X. Yeah, the end part here, one more time. So I'm just checking A R A, right? I've got to verify this fact here. What does A R A mean? Well, X are Y means that X minus Y is a rational number, X minus. So A R A would mean that A minus A is a rational number. A minus A is zero, and zero is a rational number. So perfect, then this is true, because if and only F here, so, then this is true. And so, yes, this is reflexive. Sounds good. Um, so is this relation symmetric? So we just have to prove this implication, basically. So, um, if X are Y, this implies to us that X minus Y is an element of the rational numbers. Okay, we know this fact is true, that X minus Y is an element of rational number. Um, so, uh, yeah, okay. So then we need to check, we need to ask, is this true? Well, what does that mean? This means that Y minus X is an element, this is like, is an element of the rational numbers, right? We have to see if it's true. Well, we know that Y minus X is negative X minus Y. Right? So basically, I, I, I just wanna be clear, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put a question mark on top of these, just to say, like, we're, we're not, I'm not stating it. I'm, I'm asking, is it true that this is a rational number? Um, and so we know that's a rational number. That is a rational number. And when, we know when we take the negative of a rational number, it's still a rational number. Therefore, the entire thing is also a rational number. Therefore, yes, it is true. Right? So, so we know that that is a rational number, and so this is symmetric. Means if X is related to Y, then Y is related to X. We can also just like try it, like, I'll just show you, actually, probably good to show you an example here, like, for example, like, for this one, like, two are two, which tells us that two minus two is an element of the rational numbers. Zero is an element of the rational numbers. That's kind of a trivial thing, but that's true, just as, as an example. I just wanna show you an example. And here, let's also show an example, like, so if I have like, um, five are three, right? This implies to us that five minus three, which is two, is a rational number. And that's obviously true, two is a rational number. And, and so what we're saying, we proved that it's symmetric, that means that three are five is also a rational number. And we can just check this. Three minus five is negative two, which is also a rational number. I'm just showing the use of that in this case. Um, but yeah, there you go. That's that. So that's the, we proved that it's symmetric. And then now we need to just prove that it's transitive, and I think that's the end of the question. So transitive. So to check for transitivity, we now, we need to show that if, um, if X are Y uh, and Y are Z, this implies to us that X are Z. That's the definition of transitivity. That's actually the definition of transitivity in, in everything, is bas- basically this. Um, so, uh, we'll do this, just to see what this tells us, right? This tells us that X minus Y is an element of all real, uh, of the rational numbers, and this tells us that Y minus Z is an element of the ration, not real number, rational number. And so using this information, we need to ask ourselves, is it true that X minus Z is an element of the rational numbers? Uh, rational numbers? Rational numbers, I keep saying. I say, I'm saying rational, so I'm thinking after an R, and so then I say like, R for real number isn't blah, blah, blah. We have to ask this question. This is a question we're asking. Well, probably a good way to do this is just to say that this is some, this is some A over B, and that this is some C over D. Right? So uh, what did they do from here? X minus Z minus, yeah, there's a, we can do it, makes more sense than that. Yeah, 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 sorry. I just, sorry, I forgot to write, yeah, X minus Y is equal to some A over B, and Y minus Z is equal to some C over D. What we can basically do is we can, um, uh, solve for Z in this equation. So Z equals Y minus C over D, and we can solve for X in this equation. So X equals A over B, uh, plus Y. Yeah. And then plugging that into here, right, because we know these are equivalent. All of these are equivalent, like, these three facts are the exact same thing. These three fa- these four facts, to be honest, are the, the exact, they mean the exact same thing. And these four facts all mean the exact same thing, so I can use that. I'm gonna put that in here, because the implication, you, you use your hypothesis to, to prove this. And so this is gonna be A over B plus Y minus, and it's gonna be Y minus C over D. But X minus Z is equal to this. This is, of course, A over B plus Y minus Y plus C over D, which cancel, and so we have A over B plus C over D, and that is clearly rational. Two rational numbers added together are. Two rational numbers added together are rational, whatever, you can do that yourself. And so, yeah, the implication's true, and therefore it's transitive. And so that's it. There we go. We showed the implication was true. Slightly different than how they did it in the text there, but basically. So hopefully that makes sense as a proof for transitivity. Maybe let's just quickly show that this, that the divides relation, and this might be harder than I, this might be harder than I, than I intended to be, but, but I don't know. Let's, let's just show the divides relation is a partial order, which is basically a similar, very similar set of steps. So a partial order is reflexive, it is, um... Do a second. Antisymmetric, and it is transitive. Okay, so someone asked, uh, why, sorry, why is you divide again? Why did I, like, why do I have A over B? Yeah, cuz, cuz, cuz it's a rational, exactly, it's a rational. Yeah. So the divides relation is a partial order, and so we just, we're just gonna show that here, right? We have to show these three things. That's the definition of partial order. You only make Hasi diagrams for partial orders. And so, uh, that's, yeah, so we, so for the reflexive part, that's not what I'm showing, I'm just gonna say, show X are Y is a partial order. So we need to show that it's reflexive. So basically, we need to show that X are X for any X, or I'll say, for all X in, uh, R, or actually for, techno, for all, for all X in, it can just be that, that set there, but I'll just show that it's, that it is, uh... For all, not real numbers, but I guess for all integers. Right, for all X. Again, it's good, to be honest, it's good enough if I just show it for all positive integers, so I'll, I'll just do that. For all positive integers, which is the natural numbers. X are X. So X are X is only true if X divides X. And what does that mean? Well, that just means that if it divides it, that means that X can be written as N X, and that's clearly true if N equals 1. So yes, for all numbers, they divide themselves, is what, is what we're showing here. We kind of just proved that they divide themselves. If you choose N equals 1, um, because any N, right? For any N, any N, it just means that you can write it like this, uh, then it is reflexive. So we've proven that it's reflexive. Antisymmetric. Antisymmetric, might be harder, I don't know. Means that if, I was just find my notes on this, I don't want to say the wrong thing. Here, nope. Way too many tabs already. I don't know how that happened. Not that one either. That one, right? So, they are antisymmetric. Antisymmetric means that, uh... If A, yeah, say X and Y. Oh, I guess that should be, this should be X and Y. A little bit wrong. It's R, I gotta fix that. If X are Y and Y are X, uh, this implies that X equals 1, basically. So that's the idea of antisymmetric. Symmetric would mean that this implies this. Antisymmetric is that that only happens if they're equal. But it can happen, but the only time that happens is if they're the same number. So re- re- reflexivity kind of has to come first here. But yeah. So, we can just try that. So if X divides Y and Y divides X, then this would mean that, um, so I always forget the order, so 3 divides 12. So this would mean that, and this would mean 12 is 3N, 3 times N. Yeah. So Y is NX, and X is NY. Right? Well, I guess you can... Yeah, I mean, we can plug these equations into each other, or we can do something here, but clearly, these only happen if they're the same number, right? Both of these equations can only be true if X equals Y. If X wasn't equal to Y, then you'd have this kind of multiple that's off here. I mean, you can, you can sub one into the other, so Y is N times NY. So N squared Y. So N obviously has to be 1 or negative 1, I guess, right? But either way, uh, either way, uh, actually, you know, they're the same number, Y equals Y. So yeah, so it is, it is antisymmetric. That's correct? And then finally, the transitive. I think we've shown that divides is transitive before, so I don't know if I want to go through the whole thing. Transitive, but I mean, I, whatever, I'll leave that up to you. You guys show that if X, you know, again, the definition of transitive is, uh, here. Right? So I'll, you know, you guys can try that. This, this is true for divides, which, so basically, if X divides Y and Y divides Z, then X divides Z. This is definitely true. So there you go. So assuming you can show this, then we can, uh, we can believe that this is a partial order. So I just wanted to mention, mainly I wanted to mention here was antisymmetric. So yeah. Okay. I'll keep going then, on the different, uh... Questions from the 2014 midterm, or final. Is there any specific requests for certain questions from the 2014 final? I lost it, I, I don't know where I put the file. You know? So we have, I mean, I can just do it from the beginning. I mean, there's this, you know, check if this is equivalence relation or not. I mean, I, sorry, if this is, if this, if these, these two logical statements are equivalent or not, have relations on the mind. We could do something like this, we could do some sort of sets. We could do something like this. We have some other proofs here, there's some proofs, induction again. Strong induction. The Hasi diagram, which we did, and then I'm assuming this stuff we don't, yeah, no. This is, the last page is a graph stuff, so we... The last, this is the last question from the final, this, this wa, this adjacency matrix of, yeah. According to the chat, you've skipped, you've skipped matrices. I mean, you've skipped graphs, right? So we don't have to talk about that. Although it's not, it's not wildly hard, but, but it's also, like, just didn't, didn't cover it, so. No need. So yeah, okay, well, I mean, let's, uh, try, I mean, we talked a lot, about a lot of induction last time, and basically last time was all induction. So it might be better for us to just do other questions, but I don't really mind doing whatever. Let's start with this one, I guess, let's just go from, in order, we can just try this. Probably been a while since you've done a question like this, so just want to make sure that you're remembering how to do it. So it says, "Use the truth table to determine whether the equivalence below is true. Be sure to show how you are determining equivalence or non-equivalence." So if they're equivalent, that means if I set up the truth table for this, and I set up the truth table for this, that they're, have the same truth values. Here's all the possible truth values for a triplet, right? For three, um, um, what's it called? Three variables? So, so yes, I just started building up the, the, each equation here, each expression. So I have, uh, Q implies R is probably the first thing that I draw. Q implies R, draw line there. And then probably I do P and Q, right? So I kind of just want to work from the inside out for all these expressions. So that's, I have the inside here, and then, yeah, and then, then I basically, I'd, I'd then basically just do the entire left-hand sides, I do P implies Q implies R, because I have Q implies R, and I have P, so I can, I can make that now. And then I have P and Q. Or, is it or? It's or, yeah, it's or. Imploys R. And so, here's this. Right? And then now we, um, fill in all these values. So let's remember how to do this. Let's do the or first, so the or is not that hard, obviously. So this is true, 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 this is true. Right? So I'm just, I'm just looking at this, the first two columns here, to see if it's true or not. And then the implication, if the hypothesis is false, the implication defaults to true. And then if the, um, uh, hypothesis is true, and the consequent is false, that's the only time when it's false, basically. So it's like, we're looking for a true TF here, so that's a false. TF, TF, that's a false. TF, TF, everything else is true. You ju, you just want to look for where you see like a true, false, true, false. Those are the places where an implication's false. So same thing that's gonna go on here, when we fill this in, right? P implies Q implies R. So P, we're now, now we're comparing these two, and again, I just want to look for a true, false. So true, 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 false, so that's false. True, 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 false, that's false. And then everything else is true. This is true, 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 true. And then again, for the implication, we just want to look for a true, false. So P or Q implies R, so P, where's PRQ? P or Q implies R. Now, the order is flipped, so you want to look for a true, false, like, right? It has to be the, the hypothesis is true, but the consequent is false, that's what we're looking for. So that's hypothesis is true, consequent is false, so that's false. True, 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 false. True, 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 false. False, true, also. So this is all, all the rest of it's true. And... Oh, I think you looked at PQ for the first column. Oh, instead of PR, yeah. Looks like I did that by accident. I did do PQ. Oh no, did I do PQ? No, I didn't do PQ. Oh, I did do PQ. Instead of Q. I did P, I did PR. Or did I do PR? That looks right. Q, QR. Yeah, I was looking at the first two columns. I did definitely, I definitely said that. So I, I definitely remember saying that, so they're definitely supposed to look at these two columns. True, true is true. True, false is false. False, true is true. False, false is true. Oh yeah, there's a little bit, there's, there's a couple things I had to change. True, 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 false, yeah. Uh, this is false. This is true, and this is true. Okay, so then, this is fine. So then, P implies this, it's gonna, there's gonna be some changes, because true, 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 false is false. True, 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 true is true. Or no, sorry, true, 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 false is false. Everything else is true. Okay. Yeah, is this right? I'm sorry, I, what's the answer? I can't, am I messing up things? Let's see. I'm gonna scroll through the, the solution here. Is it an equivalence relation? Not equivalent, yeah, not equivalent. So true, false, true, 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 false, true, false, true, false, true, true. Okay, everything is right now, everything's great now, yeah. Good, yeah, so, so basically, like, you, you just build it up part by part. So that's there, that's, uh, there, and then the whole thing is there, and then the whole thing is there. And you just sort of compare it, just got to get the order right for the implications. So remember how implications work, right? If, if the, you know, if, if, you know, true implies false is the only case where you get an F, where you get a false. In every other combination, it's, um, it's true. The, the implication is true. So, yeah, so that's basically the idea here, is that, is we just, we just look out for those situations. So anyway, so we've, we're finished, and we see that this is not an equivalent, uh, two expressions, because the truth tables are not the same. No, that's basically... Yeah. Was there another F that I'm looking for? No. No? That's right. Solution circle, one more answer, I don't know, doesn't make sense why. Unless it's supposed to be false? Is this supposed to be false here? This is P, this, this implies this. No, that's true. Anyways, regardless, it's not equivalent. So therefore... Well, therefore it's not equivalent. I will keep going, if anybody wants to stop me, feel free. So let's see what's going on here. Oops. Bad screenshot. Next, we have some set identities, so we have sets A, B, and C. So we want to just show that these two sets are the same. So I'll do it algebraically first, but probably drawing a picture is also, is also nice here, just to verify. But yeah, so let's, let's just do it algebraically to begin with, right? So we have, I might just follow the solution. So left-hand side is A minus B minus C. So we know, kind of do it in a lot of steps here, but we know the fact that A minus B is equal to A intersect B complement, right? Yeah, and intersect B com- Right, this is always true. So if you just want to think about Y, right? Think about what A minus B looks like. So it's everything in A, but not in B, right? Everything in A, but not in B. And so you can also think of that as taking A. This is A. I don't know, just try it, that's A. This is B. B. And so, A intersect B com, what's B complement? Ah, I lost my colors. So B complement is, do whatever in red. This is B complement outside here. B complement. And so, A intersect with B complement is just whatever is in here. Right? Whatever is in that, in that section, of course, we get the same shape. So these are completely the same expressions for the same, the same sets. Well, the different expressions for the same sets. And so we can replace it, so this is gonna be A intersect B complement minus C. And then we can just apply that here, like, that's our A, that's our B. So this is gonna be A intersect B complement intersect C complement. Technically, there's brackets around this still. So hopefully that makes sense, I just applied the rule twice. And now, the, the, uh, the intersect operation is associative. So you, you can, you can just drop the brackets and just put them, you can do whatever you want first, basically. And you can just, we can just switch that to there if you want to, but I guess I'll just say that. And so, now I gotta say that. So then A intersect B complement intersect C complement, we can just think of those as a pair. And so now, now it's time to think about, okay, when you're here, I mean, obviously you can just follow the solution, but like, if you're coming up with this on your own, you now have to think to yourself, okay, well, how am I gonna, where am I gonna go here, right? Where am I gonna, I'm trying to get this to look like, to look like this, that's what I'm trying to do. So, one way, one thing you can see is that we have B complement and, or, yeah, and C complement. And here we have B or C. So you can see that we've done some kind of De Morgan thing going on, right? Because the and has switched to an or, and the complements have been inverted. Sure, there, you know, there should be a complement up here, but maybe there's somehow that that figures itself out. So if you're thinking about this, you know, you want to see where you're going, look out for some kind of De Morgan kind of thing going on. So we're gonna do De Morgan's now, which is, uh, B or C complement. And this is the definition of A minus B or C. Right? That's the definition, based on this definition of, of, of difference, of the difference of two sets. And that's it, that's the left, that's the right-hand side. So that's it for that example. We've proven this set identity. And not too bad. So I'll move on to the power set question. After it's some proofs. So... Again, feel free to stop me or unmute if you have any questions or anything like that. So is the following statement say, "True for all sets A and B." And that's the power set of A union, the power set of B, is a subset of the power set of A union B. So just quickly, let's find the power set of something, just to, just to get a, how did I draw power set? That's how I draw power set. Power set of 0, 1, 2, 3. All right, the power set is the set of all subsets. So the, so it's basically how many different ways you can pick out, um, the different elements from the set here. So you can of course pick out nothing. You could pick out any one item. Pick out any one item. I'm just gonna do 1, 2, 0, 1. I'm just gonna do one, two, zero, one, two. I don't want to do too many, too much writing. You could pick out any pair. Zero, one. Zero, two. Uh, or, um, one, two. Or you could pick out all three. That's, obviously my brackets are deteriorating a little bit as we go. But anyways, that, that, that's the idea. So that's our power set of the set one, two, three, just as an example. Again, it's just the amount of the different ways you can, not the amount, but it's the, it's a set of all the subsets. You just want to think about how many different ways can I pick out items? Basically, if you remember from, I don't know if you covered it in this class, or if you covered it in grade 12, data management, if you took that, you know, you have the NCR, the choosing. Or you, you will cover that in, uh, you will cover that in MTH five fourteen, when you take that next year. So, this is just the idea of like, it's just accounting principle. So this is kind of what we're getting at here. The magnitude of the set. Well, the magnitude of the set is different, but, but that's the idea, is like choosing things, uh, from this set here. Okay, so anyways, to answer the question, now that we know what a power set is, we're asking, if I take the power set of some set, that's a set. The power set of A, this is a set, right? Uh, union that with the power set of B, and the other set. Is that a subset of this? So, the way we want to just check that, the way you check for subsetness, is you check that every element of this set right, is in this set. That's kind of the idea. So that's kind of what we're gonna do here. We'll just kind of follow the solution that they did. And see, um. So if I take an element of this set, right, let's, let's call that element X. So X is an element of the power set of A, union, the power set of B, right? Basically, we want to arbitrarily, for any arbitrary X that's in this, uh, we want to show that it is also i- in this set right here. So, that means that X is an element of the power set of A or X is an element of the power set of B. Right, that's what this, that's what this just implies to us. And so, we can kind of use this to break it up, right? So if this is true, right, this is kind of our case one. So if this is true, that X is an element of the power set of A. Let's say then X. Yeah. Uh, then X is a subset. So I guess I shouldn't use a variable, because it's a set. To be clear, it's a set. So, just the notation difference there. I just turned it into like a, a capital X, because it's a set. So, that means that X is a subset of A, right? That's what it means. The power set is the set of all subsets. And, we know that, uh, what is it? Sorry, what are they right here? That X is subset of A, A, union, B. And A is a subset of A, union, B. That's true. So just think about why that's true for a second. Make sure that makes sense to you, right? If we have A and B. A, B, A, union, B. A, union, B. Is this. And, A is a subset of A, union. By transitivity. Activity. That means that X is a subset of A, union, B, which means that, sorry, capital X, which means that X is an element of the power set of A, union, B. There. That's case one. So, case one, we're saying that it's this right here. That means that X is a subset of A. Well, A is a subset of A, union, B. And so X is a subset of A, union, B, which means that X is an element of the power set. The power set, there's a lot of words, a lot of the words set over and over again, but the power set is the set of all subsets. So if X is a subset of A, union, B, by definition, it is an element of the power set. And I mean, it's basically the exact same demonstration here for, for, for case two. Case two, uh, X is an element, a subset. You know, X is a subset of, uh, B. B is a subset of A, union, B. That means that X is a subset of A, union, B, which means X is an element of the power set of A, union, B. Uh, and so, both of these cases are true, and so we've proven that this is generally true. There you go. Hopefully that made sense. We can move on now, I guess. We can see, um, question three, which is like a proof question, and then question four is induction. I don't mind doing induction, but we did do a lot of induction last time. Um, so maybe we can, I can do some more questions from the twenty eighteen midterm, because, or final, because someone did ask for that. Uh, yeah, there's only one, uh, proof question, so. Question three says, prove that for every positive real number, there is always a positive real number that is larger than twice the original number. So for any real number, there is always another positive real number that is larger than twice the original. I mean, that's clearly true, if you just think about it for a second, right? So for any number, five, there's a number that's bigger than two times five. Two times ten, eleven, or twelve, or whatever. But it's clearly a true statement, um, just intuitively, but let's prove it. So, um, uh, yeah, we need to show that for all X, element of all real numbers, there exists a Y, which is an element of all real, you know, positive numbers. I'll, I'll say all real numbers, but I mean positive numbers, such that Y is greater than two X, right? So, uh, yeah, so here we have, so for all real numbers, X, which is in R plus. Let me just see what they have here. Yeah. We just need to figure out a number that is bigger than twice X. So, again, like I did with the five example, like if X is five, then double it is ten, just add one, you get something that's bigger. You can add whatever you want, but you, well, you can add whatever positive number you want. Um, but, you, uh, but, and, and in all those cases, the number is gonna be bigger than double. So, I can choose for Y. I can say that Y is two X plus whatever. I'll just say one, but you can say whatever positive number you want here, and it'll always be bigger. You could say Y equals three X. You could do that, right? And three X is definitely bigger than two X. I mean, that's a little bit harder to show. But if I choose that, right? So if I choose Y, and to be clear, Y is a positive real number, because X is a positive real number, doubling that is a positive real number, adding one is a positive real number, so Y is a positive real number. So that means for any X you give me, I can find a Y value that's bigger than double it. And I do that by doubling it and adding one. Um, so that would mean that, just to verify this, that would mean that Y is greater than two X implies, um, uh, that a two X plus one is greater than two X, which is clearly that one is greater than zero, which is true. And so, I guess this is if and only if. And so, uh, uh, yeah, so there we go. So we've just proved that that is, that is true if I make this choice. And, uh, let's see, that's the end of the proof. That's the end of the solution that they give, so. Okay, so that's, uh, that's that question. I think now let's try to do some either assignment questions, or we can go look at the twenty eighteen midterm. Does anybody have any suggestion? Or do you want to see induction? I'll let the chat decide. So you guys let me know. Do you want to see induction? Some assignment questions, maybe some more kind of relation stuff, or function stuff? I really don't mind. I'll look through some. Assignment questions here. Maybe some of them would be interesting. Look at that, maybe making that would be interesting. Yeah, okay. I mean, we can try use question three here. No, no suggestions, so. I'll do whatever. So let's try, let's try this one. Making a Hassad diagram. So again, it's the divides relation on each of the following sets. Draw the Hassad diagram for each relation. So the, the divides relation is a, um, is a, uh, partial order, so we can draw a Hassad diagram for it, and so we will do that now. So the way we do that is, I'll switch this back to black, is again, we kind of think of like the lowest kind of element, the element that kind of divides everything. I guess, yeah, the lowest element is kind of, yeah, the element that divides the most here. So one divides everything, right? So that's definitely gonna be the bottom of our tree here, like this. And so, again, I like, I like to just kind of start with it like, you know, you don't have to start with like this, but this is how I'm gonna kind of explain it. So one, two, four, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. One, two, four, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. So we have like, one divides everything, but there's more connections here than is than we usually have, like, than, than is being shown right now, is what I'm trying to say. So, for example, uh, ten divides twenty, that could be together. And, uh, five divides ten, so that whole chain can kind of just jump up onto there. Five also divides fifteen, so that can jump up onto there. Um, and then two divides ten, so we don't really jump, but we kind of, you just kind of connect it like that. Two doesn't divide five though, right? So I didn't, didn't do something like that, but I, I can say two divides four, so that can just jump up onto there. So I couldn't just kind of remove this pillar here, because the two doesn't divide five. So that's kind of an important thing. Two doesn't divide five. Um, one divides one, we don't say, because that's on, you don't, it's not necessary, you don't put any self loops when you draw a Hassad diagram. And that's it, I think. That is, that looks right to me. So that's kind of the way I like to do it. Um, not necessary that you draw it like that, but you can just draw it, you can just go right for this if you want to. So, yeah, what's on the bottom? We have one, two, five, fifteen, ten, four. Oh yeah, four divides twenty. Yeah, there you go. I always forget that. Four divides twenty. So that's kind of good. But again, like, you can't, you can't just move this up here. I guess you kind of are, but, uh, you can't just think of it like that, because, uh, four doesn't divide ten, so we can't connect those. So, uh, we have a maximal element, right? We have a maximal element. Yeah. So we have a maximal element, that's our maximal. And we all have another maximal, that's also maximal. So it's like a local max, is like what a maximal element. It's a local max, if you want to think about it kind of in calculus terms, right? It's like kind of the highest, um, in the local area. Four is not a local max, because there is something bigger than it. The, these should be a little bit more vertical. The, the lines should always go up. You can really see what's bigger than another thing, but these are up, but they're just kind of a little to the side. So those are both maximal. And then we have a minimal, that's our minimal. To be fair, that's the number one there. This is minimal. And this is also the smallest. Or minimum. Yeah. So we have a minimal element, and we also have a minimum element. We don't have any maximum element, because we don't have any element that is larger than everything, and everything divides it. Right? So that would be like sixty. Right? If we had a sixty here, that would be our maximum element. Because twenty divide sixty. So yeah, but anyways, we don't have that, so that's, that's that there. So, now, that's everything for part A. And then for part B. So yeah, I'll just say, I'll write it here, no maximum. Or maximum, sorry, maximum. We have maximal elements, we don't have a maximum element. Hope I'm not saying the wrong thing there, but. If we didn't have twenty, if we didn't have twenty, then we would have, four, ten, and fifteen would all be maximal. That's correct. Uh, and then for part B here, again, I, I'll just draw it how I like to start drawing it. So, so two is kind of like the smallest element, right? Two divides, well, it doesn't divide three, right? So two and three are on the same level here. But two divides four, two divides six, two divides eight, two divide, does not divide nine, does three divide nine, three divides nine, two divides twelve, and two divides eighteen. I'm a little cramped here, so two divides nine, and two divides eighteen. I kind of just like to start with one level like this, but then we can start breaking it up more, right? So for example, four divides twelve, right? Four also divides eight, so that can move there. Um, six divides eighteen, so that can move there. Nine divides eighteen, so that can go like that, right? So I can't kind of, I can't move it. I, I'm kind of moving, I mean, whatever, they, they connect like that. Three divides six? Uh, six divides twelve? So I don't draw a line from three divides twelve, right? Because that's implied by the transitivity here, right? We don't, we don't have to draw that. We just want to connect with lower levels like that. That should be, that should be right. Watch me be wrong, but, no, that's right. There you go. Twelve. That's right. So we have three maximal elements. These are our maximal. We have no maximum. We have no minimum. And we have two minimal elements. We don't have any minimum element, because there's no element that's smaller than the rest. And we don't have any maximal, because there's no element that's bigger than the rest. We have local maxes and local min's, which is, which is how I like, what I like to call them, maximal and minimal elements. Uh, but we don't have any of these like global maxes or global, so. Um, is four also, yeah, someone, someone said is four also maximal? Four is not, I think, I'm assuming for this one, I missed that one. Four is not maximal, because there is element greater than it. There's something bigger than it. Twenty is bigger than it, in this partial order. But twenty has nothing bigger than it, and fifteen has nothing bigger than it. Right? You, you might look at this and say, well, twenty is bigger than fifteen, but, but, uh, they're not comparable. Like, there's no edge, and there's no transitive edge. You don't go, you don't, you don't go backwards. Shouldn't have drawn that, but there's no edge like this. What is the definition of maximum and minimum? So those ones are, like, that's the global maxes and global min's. I'll show you the formal definition, but, but basically like, it's an element, the maximum is that an element that's higher up the chain than everything else, and a maximum, a minimum element is something that's at the bottom of the chain for everything. Maximal values is the biggest value, and no other value connected to it. Yeah, it's, yeah. That is greater than it, yes. Yes, that is greater than it. That's correct, with the addition. The formal definition of this stuff, which this is a discrete math course, so I guess I'll show the formal definition, is, um, where is it? Here. It's a little a little bit technical. But, that's basically it. So, given a partial order, so this little symbol is used for partial orders, it's just, it's just comparing the two. This is the relation. An element A is maximal, if for every other, for all the other, uh, elements of the set, they, that A is bigger than B, right? Higher up the chain, that's higher up the chain, or they're incomparable. So for every other element, you look at fifteen, for every other element, it's either higher up the chain or incomparable. So for five, it's higher up the chain. For one, it's higher up the chain. For two, it's not comparable. Right? There's no, there's no, they're not on the same chain, they're not comparable, so that, like this, right? Um, and for every, for all of this, they're also not comparable. But yeah, greatest and least is, sorry, this minimum is least, maximum is greatest. So minim- greatest element is the maximum. Least element is the minimum. I would also prefer to say it like this, but the solutions here say the word maximum and minimum, so I'm just saying those words too. Okay, so there's our Hassad diagram example. Um, oh, another one, I guess. Let's try, yeah, let's try question one from this, because I think that might be interesting to do. Quite a bit of writing to it, so, let's see if. Quite a bit of writing to it, so, let's see if, finish up. So let R be the set of all real numbers, and define a relation R on R cross R as follows. So for all A, B, and C, D in R cross R, A, B, so a relation, I just, a relation on something is like a relation from R cross R to R cross R. So for all A, B, and C, D in R cross R, A, B, R, C, D, if and only if, so I'll just write that. A, B, R, relate, is related to, C, D. If and only if, A is less than C, uh, if either A is less than C, or both, okay, that's a lot happening. A less than C, or A equals C, and B is less than equal to D. Kind of a lot going on here, so let's try to come up with an example, right? So, R, this, so, um, let's say I have 2, 0. So if A is less than C, so if I had like 5, 3 here, this would be true, right? As long as A is, that's all that matters, is that A is less than C, but let's say A wasn't less than C. Um, let's do another example, example, example. Say this is 5, and this is a 2, then A must be equal to C, and B is less than D. So, basically, it can never be, A can never be less than C, right? A could be equal to C, but in the case that A is equal to C, then D has to be greater than or equal to B. So 6 and 5 here, 6 and 6 would also work. Maybe I'll draw that after, 6 and 5 would also. You know, I, I can kind of imagine how this might come up in some situation, I don't know, if you like, need to make sure you have more of this resource compared to this one. In the case where that you have the same amount, then you need this kind of buffer to make sure that at least that you have more of this. So I can see how that would be, but, uh, anyways, so, let's try to show, basically, that this is a partial order relation. So a partial order relation is reflexive. Um, so it's reflexive, antisymmetric, and transitive. So let's start with reflexive. For it to be reflexive, we need to choose some A, B, and we need to show that A, B, related, is related to A, B. So this would mean, um, that A is less than A, or A equals A, and B is less than equal to B. Well, this is false, this is true and true, true and true is true, false or true is true, though that is true. So, proven? That's my little, I don't know, some proof writers write little box, and I, I like writing little, little check. Anyways, so, that's our reflexive, and then 2 is, uh, we want to check for antisymmetry. So antisymmetry is where, um, A, B is related to, sorry, A, B is related to C, D, and C, D is related to A, B, if and only if, um, A equals B, and, uh, A equals C, and, uh, but the points are the same, A, B equals C, D. Which implies A equals C and B equals D, there we go. So we need to show, we need to show this. I guess it's not if and only if, I guess it's just one way, you only need to show the one. So, um, we need to now, you know, suppose we have 2 of these A and B, so we, you know, we have these 2 points, A, B, and C, D, we have these 2 points like this. We know from this fact, right? We know from this fact, that A is less than C, and, or, or, A equals C, and B is less than equal to D, right? That was the definition of our, our function. From this, gotta get a different color, let's try this green here, this. Is that the, already the color that was there? Anyways, uh, this, we know that C is less than A, or, what is it? C equals A, and D is less than equal to B. We know these things, these things that happen. Yeah. So if we assume, so now we kind of break it up into 2 cases, like, if it's this, that's true, or if it's this, that's true. So this is case 1, and this is case 2. If, in case 1, if A is less than C, then C cannot be less than A, so now we want to, you know, go back to, we want to go to this, right? So if, if, in the case that A, you know, so we assume, assume A less than C is true. Um, if we assume that, rewrite it, because I don't want it to be in green. Or actually, this shouldn't be. If we assume A is less than C is true, then we look back at this condition, which is our condition for the other one. Um, then, this can't be true. This also can't be true. So that means that this whole other thing is false. Right? So, uh, you know, we're assuming this whole thing is true, but if it's the first one that's true, then this one necessarily is false. Hey, there's no way. Because, again. Okay, so kind of a lot happening, so I'm just gonna recap what we're doing. We're trying to show that this implies this. We're looking right now at the first expression, the first expression, logical expression. That tells us this, it's broken up into 2 cases, because it's an or, so we have to see now, okay, well, what if it's the first thing that's true? Because if it's the first thing that's true, then the whole thing is true, because it's an or statement. So if it's the first thing that's true, then necessarily, this is false. Necessarily, this is false. Because A is less than C, means that C cannot be less than A, and C can also not be equal to A. So, um, this is false, and this is also false, so false or false is false. See what the solution says here? It cannot be true, and so it cannot be. Okay, so it must be true, then, it must be true, that A equals C, so this means must be true. So I said case 1, case 2, but basically what we just showed is that it can't be case 1. It has to be case 2. That A equals C, and B is less than equal to D. So now we know this for a fact. So. Yeah, so we know now that this is certainly true, that A equals C, remember, that's what we're trying to show, we're trying to show A equals C, right? Um, and also that B equals D. So we did the first thing here, we showed for sure that A equals C. And now we need to just sort of show, okay, assuming this, again, this condition breaks up into 2 cases. This will be certainly false, this will certainly be false. Right? So definitely false, I guess, let me, let me not write it on top of this, because that's gonna be annoying to read after. So, now looking back at this condition like this, this will be false because of this, and so we now need to just make sure that this is true, that C equals A, and D is less than equal to B. Well, we know that's true, right? We know that's true. We now just need to make sure that's true, as well as this. So we need to know that B is less than D, and D is less than B, or equal to, and that's only true if B equals D. There we go. We are done. So we have our A equals C, and B equals D. That's kind of a mess, kind of a long one, but I think, I hope the drawing makes more sense than just like the text in the, in the solution. So we've proven that it's antisymmetric. Okay, and we have 2 more minutes left, so let's just do the transitive now, so let's just prove that it's transitive. So, transitive, I just write it up here, I forget what, yeah, I copy and paste it a million times, so there's our transitive. Which is that if X is related to Y, and Y is related to Z, but this is not, this is, this is A, B, C, D, um, what do they use? Yeah, it makes sense, yeah, C, D, E, F, that A, B is related to E, F. So, um, here we are. We need to show this is true, so what does this tell us? If this is true, we know this is true, right? That's, we know that this side is true here, that's, that's the point of the implication, we're assuming that. This means that A is less than C, or A equals C, and B is less than equal to D. This is the definition. And, so kind of like a big and. Uh, C is less than E, or C equals E, and uh, E is less than equal, or, D is less than equal to F. There. So we want to use these facts now, to prove that this must be true. If this is true, then this must be true. So, uh, yeah, let's see what they do here, so suppose, da, da, da. Okay, so we break it up into cases again, so this is kind of case 1. So let's say, from the first thing, that it's the first thing that's true, that A is less than C. Right? Um, so if A is less than C, then this is certainly false, right? So how about this, I'll, let me just maybe, maybe it makes more sense to copy it, I don't know, let's see how that works. So I'll say case 1. Case 1, let's say this is true, so this is certainly false, so this whole thing's certainly false. Right? Um, so if this is true, that A is less than C, that means that A is less than C, C is less than, well, okay, so then we don't know which one's true, if it's either this, or this. Uh, yeah, okay, so what do they, what do they do? Let's see, first suppose A is less than C, then since, in either case. Okay. Yeah. So if this is true, then we have 2 possibilities relating it to this side, right? Then here, it's either that C is less than E, or, and we're only focusing on C and E for, for the second here, or C equals E. Just, just, just focusing on the C and E stuff, for the moment. Sure, also this, but since it's an and, this must also be true, right? So it's either this, or this. And in either case, either way, either way, um, uh, C, or what is C is? Um, yeah, e- either way, A is less than C, therefore, A is less than E. A is less than E, sorry, A is less than E. And remember, that's part of what this means, I guess I should write that. So this means, A is less than E, or A equals E, and B is less than equal to F. So, uh, assuming this, assuming that this was the correct one, we get it that it's the first thing here, that this is true, so the whole thing is true. Under the assumption that A was less than C. Right? We get that, we get this. And so we've proven the first thing, but now we have to now assume that it's the other thing that's true, so that's kind of like, that's case 2. So we've dealt with case 1. Case 2 is assume that this is the true thing. Which is that A is equal to C, so that must be false, A is not less than C. A equals C, that's what we're assuming here. And B is less than equal to D. Okay, so, uh, over here, we look over here, right? We either have that, um, C is less than equal to E, or this whole thing right here. See what the solution says, it says, and next was A equals C. Either C is less than equal to E. Okay, and we, we break this into 2 subcases, there you go, that's interesting. So we break this into 2 subcases, case 2.1, assuming this is true, assuming this is the true thing. Let me just, let me just do this quickly. We break this into 2 subcases, assuming that's the true thing, this is true. And this is false, and so this whole thing is false. Um, that C is less than E. Oh, yeah, and so then, and then, and so that implies to us, C is less than E, remember, that's true, so A is less than E. And that's, uh, what we want to show, so there we go, that, that works like that, that, that case 2.1 is done. And then we want to break this now into case 2.2, which is that this is true, again, still assuming that that's true, that's what the whole case 2 is, assuming that that's true. Um, is that C is, uh, yeah, so assuming this is true. We know for a fact that A is equal to C. C equals E, and D is less than equal to F. C is equal to E, what were we trying to show? Well, I guess we're trying to show either that A is less than C, but that's not possible here. Or that A equals E, and B is less than equal to F. So, A equals C, is that what I'm trying to show? A equals E, that's not hard, A equals E, A equals C, C equals E, so we can combine these 2 facts, here, right? Combine the 2 orange facts, A equals C equals E, A equals E, there's 1 part of it, right? We're trying, again, we're trying to show this, and then the last thing we're trying to show is B is less than equal to F. So B is less than equal to D is also true, and D is less than equal to F. Again, by transitivity, we have that B is less than equal to F. And then, then, that is true. And so all in all, in all cases, this is true. It was kind of a, that was kind of a long one, so I'm gonna recap that really quickly, so. Transitive, we're trying to show that this implies this. This can be broken up into, you know, all that right there, so that's this whole, that's this whole side is broken up into this. And we now need to break it into basically 4 cases. Assume the first thing is true here. Assuming that first thing is true, then we can see that we can run to this, and so then that is true. A is less than E, so that is true. Okay, great, we've done, dealt with that. Now what if it's the other thing that's true? Well, if it's the other thing that's true, then we need to break that into 2 cases. And in each of those subcases, we need to find something that makes it so that our, uh, conclusion is true. So in the first subcase, we find A is less than E, which is great. And then in the second subcase, we find A is equal to E, and B is less than equal to F. That is both true, come on, one note, there you go, and then that's true there. There we go, okay. So that's, that's the end of that one, that was a long one, that last, that last, uh, transitive example there, but, um, there we go. Okay, guys, well, it's 8:07, so that's our time for today. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know, I'll be here for a few more minutes, just uploading. But otherwise, I hope this was helpful, um, you can always email me if you have any questions, or if you want, yeah, if I forgot to upload it or something. No problem, guys, have a good night. Good luck on the exam, hope it goes well, and I'll talk to you again soon, hopefully next semester, doing some tutorials or whatnot. Okay.